Good afternoon. It is now four o'clock and this is the regularly scheduled time to begin our meeting of Board of Commissioners for Washington County. We would like to extend our welcome to all of you. And we look forward to hearing from many of you through the course of the meeting and we appreciate your presence. Our invocation today is going to be offered by Carol Drake of the St. George Catholic Church. And following the invocation, Marty Bigby, who is the new Utah State Commander for the American Legion Post 90, will be honored to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And so we will begin in that order. Mrs. Drake.
Let us pray. All-knowing God, God of wisdom, we seek your presence among us during this meeting. Light our paths of knowledge with your divine knowledge, so we may better know and understand the agenda before us. Open our ears to more clearly hear those whose voices may address us during this meeting, and open the eyes of our hearts to witness your presence in these voices and all who are gathered here this afternoon. May we graciously listen to each other and respect the opinions of one another as this meeting evolves. Recognizing the contribution of each is worthwhile. May any and all decisions we make be for the common good of our community and those we serve, who reside in and are part of this community. May we know your guidance, your direction, and your blessing on this meeting and any and all discussion, interactions, and decisions which take place. May who we are and all we do give honor and glory to your name. We ask all of this in the name of your beloved Son, our Lord Jesus Christ, who lives and reigns forever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much.
Beautiful. Lovely. Commander, when you're finishing the pledge, would you also tell us a little bit about Post 90 and yourself, where you served?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Post 90 is one of the older ones. We started in, we applied for our charter in 1919. Our post is named after Leslie Teeger, who was still over in 1919, Champagne, France. And so we, our post is named after him. We finally got our final grant in 1920. And so this year, I'm celebrating a little bit early, but we're celebrating the 100th American Legion State Convention here in Utah, in St. George.
Wow.
So, clarification, I'm the current commander and future commander for Post 90, Mr. Commander for all 16 posts in Southern Utah. And I will be, I'm the vice commander now in July 1st, after June 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, I will be the state commander. And I just want to let everybody know, we reached our 100% goal, so Utah's back on number one.
Great. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, you're good. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Commissioners, our first item of business today is the Consent Agenda. And the Consent Agenda is a means of expediting routine matters which come before the commission for approval. The consent portion of the agenda is approved by one non-debatable motion. If any commissioner wishes to remove an item from the consent portion of the agenda, that item becomes a first order of business on the regular agenda. I would entertain a motion for today's Consent Agenda.
Very good, Mr. Chairman. I didn't see anything out of order in the Consent Agenda. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Consent Agenda, approving audit-approved claims for payment for April 19th, 2019 through May 7th, 2019. Item B, approval of commission meeting minutes for April 16th, 2019, and Washington County Land Use Appeal Hearing Minutes of April 15th, 2019. C, approval of administrative adjustments real property. D, approval of administrative adjustments personal property. E, approval of applications for property tax abatement. F, consideration and approval of application for settlement or deferral of property tax. And G, acknowledgement of publishing the notice of adoption of ordinance number 2019-1134-0, 2019-1135-0, and 2019-1136-0, published on Saturday, April 20th, 2019.
Second. Thank you, Commissioners Iverson and Omquist. The motion has been made and seconded to approve today's Consent Agenda. All in support of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Regular agenda items for consideration. And we've got some very notable people here that are here for that first item on the agenda, and that's the presentation of the Fair Logo Contest winner. And Susie, I'm thinking that's going to be you.
So, earlier in April, we did a logo competition for our Washington County Fair. We opened it up to residents. This is the winning fair logo. You can see on the screen here. We had nearly 80 submissions for a logo competition, for our logo competitions. The youngest was a 10-year-old from Bloomington Elementary. Our oldest was a 76-year-old here in our county. We narrowed it down to the top 11. We had 11 finalists that we opened that up to the public to vote. And after 27,000 votes in five days, this was our winner. So we'd like to welcome and congratulate Adriana Morgan. She is our winner of this beautiful logo. Come on up, Adriana. And as the winner, she receives a $500 check. A real check.
Real check.
Can we take a picture?
You know, that's, that's big money.
That is big money.
Adriana, can you, can you maybe come and tell us what your inspiration was for this logo?
Well, I think I like the unique landscape we have here in Southern Utah, and so I just wanted to incorporate that. And I think we kind of promote artistic qualities. And so I liked, it's hard to see on the projector, but there's like the triangle pattern in the bases. And I like the sun here, I like the heat, so the fair will kind of represent like a sun or a sunset also.
It seems like it kind of has a retro.
Yeah, I wanted it to be like trendy, but not something that would go out of style super quick, I guess.
But do you have a background in?
I just barely graduated from Dixie State with digital design. And freelance work, I work in the marketing department at the university. Do that pretty often.
Well, there's 500 bucks for your student loans.
Yeah, it was awesome. And I'm getting married this month, so it's going to help along.
Good for you.
Thank you, thanks.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you.
And Susie and Pam, thank you for your leadership and effort, everything that you're doing with Fair.
That's great, 20,000, 27,000 votes on that. That's, in five days, that's, that's a lot of great participation. That's super.
All right. Item number two, presentation by Kathleen Nielsen of the Confluence Park Grant. And Kathleen, maybe you can mention what you need from us as part of the application process for the Confluence Park Grant.
Right. First of all, let me just tell you a little bit about the Lorraine McAllister Fund. It is a fund that primarily was put aside by a man whose name was Lorraine McAllister at some point in time, and the state of Utah has kept funding this grant. And its primary purpose is to take large land pieces that they want, that people want to preserve or keep. I know that in Northern Utah, a lot of it has been farms or things like that, that people want to keep farming because they want the farm there. And so they would let the people that own the farm keep farming, but then, but they don't own the property anymore. They were also helpful in the purchase of the land that is part, that is Confluence Park. They paid more than a million dollars out of the Lorraine McAllister Fund for the purchase of the property. Of course, as we know, it was much more than 1 million, but I know they paid at least that much for their part. Therefore, they are very interested in the park maintaining itself and continuing on with the projected site that they had for it. And as you know, the DWR, the UDWR overlooks, they have a conservation easement across the park. And so they are, they've been very helpful in funding, as you can see from the paper, our history with it has been, we have received three grants over the last 10 years that have amounted to quite a bit of money. Everything that they give, and they don't give nearly as much for conservation and restoration as they do, of course, for the purchase of property. But they've been good to us, and they like to see us do well, and they want to see the conservation and the restoration continue. So we, and we've been very fortunate because of that. So you can see by looking at the numbers that even though everything is 50/50 match, like for example, on the very first one that we got, we received $30,000. And then we had in-kind and donations and other things that made the grant value worth $67,000. So whatever, whatever we ask from them, and we are asking $35,000 this year, we believe that the work that we have to do, we will be able to help considerably with the match to get to 35. But we're asking if the, if the commission might consider 15 to 20, so that we make sure that we get that and above. And hopefully, we will go above. The problem that we have this year is that there are a lot of large things that need to be dealt with. Trees and snags and things that are really a hazard to the public. And as you know, there are more and more people continuing to visit Confluence Park. And we are anxiously looking for some other grant monies that have also come available more recently, but haven't been around like, like this one in particular. There hadn't been any money for conservation or restoration in the last three years. And they, in fact, the legislature voted not to fund this anymore for this purpose. And there was an outpouring of many people across the state who, and they said, okay, okay. And they did put money back in it this year. But we will be talking with the state history people about helping us come up with some kind of architectural look at the power station. We have some ideas of things that we would like to see happen. Every time you visit the park, you'll notice that there's been more deterioration, and we want to get that stopped. There, also, we're looking at a bridge in the future across the Virgin River down there. And we're hoping that even though they don't have funds that will be supportive of that, we know that the grant that we're applying for now will help bring that along because it will help add to the restoration of the plant life, it will help add to the cleanup of everything that's down there.
Kathleen, Commissioners, of course, know where Confluence Park is, but just the benefit of anybody who may be watching on TV or present here with the chambers, could you tell us where Confluence Park is?
Well, Confluence Park is at the confluence of the Virgin River, the Lavercan Creek and Ash Creek. And it is notable for its history. We can, of course, there were Anasazi people that lived in that area many years ago, thousands of years ago. And it is also the area that Father Escalante passed through when he was coming down here trying to find routes to different areas. And he writes in his journal about the very specific crossing by the confluence. He also talks about the smelly hot tubs that were, well, hot pots that were up above that. So we're quite sure that that's exactly where he was. And he found corn in the area as well, that where the natives were growing corn. When the Mormon pioneers started coming down here, Brigham Young sent a party down here to try and find out where they could do some cultivation. They felt at the time that the waters of the virgin were too thin to plow and too thick to drink. So they didn't see it as much of a, of a great place for that. However, there were some diligent Mormon pioneers from Tocqueville who did actually cultivate in the area. And they write in their journals about turning over pots every time that they would run a furrow down the, down the area. So it's quite an interesting place to visit. We, we have a lot of signage. We have an entrance, the first entrance that we participated in building is the Lavercan Creek entrance through the, I never remember the name of that.
Riverwood.
Riverwood, Riverwood subdivision on Highway 17 as you're going from Lavercan to Tocqueville. And there's a big kiosk down there that has many interesting interpretive informations about the different plant life, the different animal life, the history, and a big map. You can park there and go in, walk in on the roadway, which is actually a trail, and you can find your way. In Huracan, you can enter the park at the very end of Main Street. There's a small trailhead there with a panoramic interpretive presentation. You can go from Lavercan, the end of Center Street. There's construction at this point in time just, just south of the café, but there is an entrance there as well. And we are also working on another entrance out of Lavercan that will be available in about a year.
Thank you very much for the explanation. It's a beautiful area. If you haven't visited, it's, it's really worthy of going down and taking a look at. Very historic, very beautiful.
Okay.
Thank you for your work on this. The commission will want to leverage, I'm sure, whatever we need to, to help secure the grant that you're applying for. And we appreciate all of the hard work that you've put in in securing these previous grants.
All right. Well, thank you. And we also will need a letter, which I spoke to you about earlier, so I will contact you in regards to that. Thank you.
You bet.
I think we have it in the budget, Mr. Chairman, and I think it'd be a good project.
I do too. And we've got a park fund that I think we could take that out of. We'll probably keep Eric smiling over there. Need to do that on the next mission meeting. But we'll get that taken care of. Thank you. Ray, now, item number three, consideration of purchase requests.
Okay. The first item I have is for the sheriff's office. It's for some removal of the equipment in the patrol cars. And that's a total of $17,266. And the second one is for tourism. It's a blanket purchase order for a co-op marketing for the Trails website. And it's a total of $122,311.83. And unless there's any questions, that's all I have.
Thank you. We've got both copies. Commissioners, any questions on these two purchase requests as presented by Ray?
Not necessarily, but Brittany, how close are we on the Trails website and that app? It wasn't quite an app, it was a kind of an app. It's working? Okay, and that's, that's partly what we're approving right now is, okay. Mostly what? Oh. Okay, very good. Well, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase requests as presented by Ray.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, all in support of approving the purchase requests as presented by Ray. Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
As Ray stood there kind of puzzled, just waiting, I'd already made the motion in my mind, as I'm famous for doing.
Next, we'd like to recognize Kim Hafen for a public hearing to open the 2019 Washington County Budget to update Fund 27, which is our Economic Development Fund. And we also recognize Jeriah Threlfall is here, who works with St. George area economic.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if we've ever taken the opportunity to really acknowledge that Kim Hafen.
You should do it now if you haven't done it already.
Intentionally.
Don't pass up an opportunity, Commissioner. It'll only last for so long.
That's true. I only have a few more months.
That's right.
Hey, Kim.
So you'll remember that when we approved the 2019 budget, we anticipated that our Fund 27, which was a Site Select Plus Economic Development Fund, would leave our budget because they had become a 501(c)(3) or a nonprofit. And so we didn't budget anything for that. Now, as we kind of wrap up all the paperwork and the accounting with, with Fund 27, they have a fund balance that has accumulated over the course of time. And they also received money in 2018 that was for 2019, for the Economic Summit, and in some cases, money that was donated by the private sector or other government agencies. So we had that as unearned revenue in 2018 and became earned revenue in 2019.
You're not going to say they want it.
They're anxious that they would get that money. And we were anxious not to do that until we had the budget approved to actually spend that money. So what we have here really is just a budget opening that would, that would put that budget into our 2019 budget so that we can write those checks to them. Our auditors don't like us writing a check just out of the fund balance. They like that to go through the expense and revenue section so it's more transparent to people that see our budget.
And we also paid $5,000, it was a pass-through for the Economic Development Corporation of Utah that is contracting. Is that, need to be taken into account on this?
No, that, it used to be that we'd make a contribution to the 27 fund when it was in our budget, but because they're, they weren't in the budget, that expense was just an expense in our 10 fund as a, like a donation.
Thank you, Kim, for the explanation. Commissioners, I would entertain a motion to open a public hearing for any of the public that would like to step forward and speak to the proposal that has been brought to us by our clerk auditor, Kim Hafen, to amend the 2019 budget to transfer funds to the 501(c)(3). Is it a c)(3) or is it a c something else? C)(6). Thank you, Jeriah.
So moved.
Okay, motion's been made to open a public hearing.
Second.
All in support, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing is now open. If anybody would like to step forward, state your name and leave any opinion as to whether or not the county should proceed with that, it'd be welcome to do so. Jeriah. Say your name and introduce yourself just a little bit.
Sure. Jeriah Threlfall, I'm the director of the St. George area Economic Development, formerly Site Select Plus and Washington County Economic Development Council, and the different names that it's been known by over the past 24 years. Just wanted to take this time to thank the Commissioners for their support. I know, thank you, Kim and Ray, and their hard work on doing the audit to separate all of this money out. As Kim mentioned, it comes from a lot of different places. We have 30 or 40 private donors, city, cities, the water district, all kinds of people. So we appreciate your guys' leadership in helping us get to this point where we're a 501(c)(6) and appreciate your presence on our board and kind of carrying us along the last 20 years or so. It's kind of a quasi sort of official government sort of private organization until we could get to this point. So I just want to say thank you. And obviously, I'm in favor of the, you asked for the opinions, obviously, I'm in favor of it. So appreciate all you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeriah. Does anyone else wish to comment? Seeing none.
Move we close the public hearing for item number four.
Second that motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to close the public hearing. All in support, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item number five. Now, do we need to vote on?
Yeah, I think we need a motion on the changing of the budget now to.
I move that we change the budget to update Fund 27 according to Clerk Auditor of the Year, Kim Hafen.
I'll say. Second that motion.
We got it in. Good job, Victor.
Made and seconded to amend the budget to update Fund 27 to transfer funds to the 501(c)(6) St. George area Economic Development. All in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number five, consideration of correction to Resolution R.2019-2455, a resolution amending the fees for services for the Washington County Recorder's Office. Eric, I guess we made a little mistake. We made that effective in July, and what should we have done?
Oh, should, did we not do this? Is this a, sorry, I was looking at this as, this is the first we'd done this. We do this in our last meeting. We made this be effective May 14.
That's when it needs to be effective.
That's when it needs to be effective.
Yeah. I think we'd put it into July in our motion, so.
And this is, this is just to bring us in line with a new state law, where the recorder fees were kind of scattered across the state, and they want it to be more uniform.
Okay. That resolution is page 69. If somebody'd like to make a motion for us.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution R-2019-2455, Resolution amending the fees for service for Washington County Recorder's Office, acknowledging that they will start March 14th, 2019.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number six, Mayor Hart, we're going to be considering Resolution Number R.2019-2459. And this resolution would approve tourism funds to Ivans for Fire Lake State Park. Mayor, could you tell us about that and what specifically Ivans is doing and how that will benefit not only Ivans, but maybe the rest of the county and visitors to our area?
Sure. So over the last two years, in conjunction with the Chivwitz Band and the Water Conservancy District, Ivan City has taken upon itself the improvement project to create Fire Lake Park. Fire Lake Park is a section of Ivans Reservoir, the oldest reservoir in the county, as you know, just celebrated. just celebrated its hundredth birthday. And by virtue of the configuration of the reservoir with a small four-acre sort of pimple on its nose down in the southwest corner, the Conservancy District created a causeway and sectioned that off. And now, now it is a swimming lagoon, beautiful place. So, in the beginning, Ivan City developed a beachfront all the way around that. We exported thousands of yards of clay and muck. And with the generous help of the band, we imported equally thousands of yards of sand. And we've created this, this beach area around this beautiful swimming lagoon. We've proceeded since then to improve, you have a map before you, sorry, the audience doesn't have that as well. You have a map before you that shows the improvements that are either completed or are underway that include a major landscape area on the peninsula, sort of in the center of the picture, at the end of the causeway, and a variety of improvements around that area. We're just now completing the bathroom and shop and pavilion complex. That will be done in a week. And, and previously, and I'd like to actually publicly thank the Commission for the support that you provided a year ago that helped us complete the new access road and parking that included a twelve-stall parking area establishing a trailhead for the Veil Loop. I'd like to let you know that I drive out there fairly often. And it's, it's quite often that we find a vehicle or two or more, obviously cycle-related by the racks that are mounted on the back.
Sure.
And so, that's being used, and I'm sure those folks appreciate that very much. So, if you, if you look and about a third of the way in from the left, you see a dark vertical line that shows the boundary between Ivan City and the reservation. And so, this is an interesting and complicated project because the Water Conservancy District manages the reservoir. But indeed, part of this is, is not, not within Ivan City. So, if you'll notice in white, you'll see a network of trails. They're wide enough for a pickup truck to be able to carry material around. But those trails are completed, or will soon be completed, to the reservation boundary. And it leaves one kind of significant project remaining. And that is to continue that, that trail around essentially the west half of the swimming lagoon. We find that the reservoir, the Fire Lake Park, is being used in large measure by, by young parents and children. You can go out there on a warm weekend and literally see dozens of little kayaks floating around out there with, with young children on them. And they generally come with a, with a cart to carry the kayaks around and a cooler on wheels. And right now, it's just traveling over hill and dale to get to the majority of the beach area. So, we would like very much to complete that. It's sort of the final phase of this. But it, being on reservation ground, it's, it's sort of a difficult thing for the city to justify to its residents to take that project on exclusively, exclusively through our own funding. And so, I've reached out to the Water Conservancy District, and now I'm reaching out to you to request your participation in that. The overall project is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars estimated. And we would hope that the county would be willing to support us to the tune of fifty thousand dollars to do that, which Ivans would match, and I'm quite sure the district is going to do that. We have a permission from the, the Shewitz Band Council to proceed with this, with this, to do the grading work and so forth, and that the concrete is of formality. So, that's the essence of it. I will tell you that we had no idea that that park would become so popular. And it's surprising to see the license plates on a busy weekend, which include Nevada and Arizona. Don't they have water down there? But certainly, we thought it might just be a little local park, mostly for use by, say, Ivans and Santa Clara residents. But my goodness, we have residents from all over the county. And I've come to understand why. Beach, water, free. And the city has taken the responsibility on to maintain this park. We've invested around a hundred and, around a million five hundred thousand to this point. So, it's been a substantial investment on our park, but, but it's so appreciated and so well-used. So, we'd be grateful for your consideration of that.
I've got one short question. I know that sometimes Ivans Reservoir, the water gets kind of yucky in it, a lot of moss growing in it. I'm sure you've done something so that this small pool right here is probably pressure water or?
Yes, in fact, the Conservancy District, in addition to building the causeway, brought a significant water line, eight-inch, I believe, to the edge. In fact, you can kind of see it in the lower right-hand portion of the lagoon. So, that, that eight-inch water supply line is constantly flowing to the tune of replacing the entire volume of water in the lagoon every week. So, between that and we regularly treat the water to kill the algae and snails, interestingly, that, that are the mechanism by which swimmer's itch is introduced into the water. And that treatment seems to have greatly reduced that risk. So, we, we almost never hear a complaint about that. And as a part of our, our most recent project, you can see in the middle there, we've put in an aerator that, that we're told by people more scientific than me also will help that water quality and further mitigate the concern over swimmer's itch there. We want it to be a place where parents can bring their kids and just have a blast and go home and not end up with kids having to scratch themselves.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
How's the band been on this? It's great to see this type of cooperation with, with the band and working with them.
They've been great. Ever since I was elected mayor, one of my priorities was to try and establish a closer relationship with them. And we have had interaction in a variety of ways over the last nine years. And they've been, they've been very cooperative on this. Like I say, they have provided most of the materials to create the beach areas and grateful for that.
It's great. Very.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt, let's see, I do have a motion here, don't I? Did we have a motion for this, or was I just gonna make?
I would accept a motion.
Oh, here it is, right here. So, for Resolution R-2019-2459, the only point that I'd like to make is that we're going to approve it, but pass it through for review of our tab board, which is a process we use to spend, expend any tourism-related funds.
Okay, I will accept the motion of 2019-2459. Have you got a second?
Second.
And then I pursuant to your motion to present this to our tab board, I chair that board. I will put this on our next agenda and get their concurrence on it as well. And then we will get that to you. I'm wondering if when you get this all done, maybe you come back and give us a report.
Pleased to do that. In fact, we'll invite you out there and have a little party.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, the motion has been made and seconded. Let's vote on it. As amended, R. 2019-2459, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seven, consideration of Resolution R. 2019-2460, a resolution appointing a board member to the Pine Valley Local District. And I can speak to that. The Pine Valley Local District is one of two districts that we have up in the Pine Valley area. The other is the Fire District. And we have advertised it and put out for application. We received an application from Herman Nordbrook. Herman has served on the Fire District, and I've had the privilege of actually interviewing him for that position. He's extremely well-recommended. I also received a call from board members up in Pine Valley, hoping that he would be appointed. So, I see no reason that I wouldn't give my wholehearted endorsement for Mr. Nordbrook.
Is that a motion that I can second?
I will go ahead and make the motion.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded for Resolution R. 2019-2460. And this would appoint Herman Nordbrook for a term that expires on December thirty-first, 2021. All in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number eight, consideration of Resolution Number R. 2019-2461, a resolution supporting tobacco age amendments. Mr. Oomquist.
Well, as you know, House Bill 324 showed the success throughout this last session to restrict to age twenty-one the purchase by youth of tobacco products for the age twenty-one. And so, the local youth county coalition wanted to chime in and make sure that through reaching out to legislators as well as their own personal sort of support of any legislation to that effect for the health and benefit of the youth, they chimed in. And so, welcoming that here, we talked with them and feel like it was nice for us to also support a resolution to the effect that not only do we recognize what the legislature has accomplished, but what we want is support here locally.
Thank you.
So, that resolution is before us.
So, that is a motion in support of. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in support of Resolution R. 2019-2461, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nine, consideration of Resolution Number R. 2019-2462, a resolution authorizing the auctioning off of thirteen in-car camera systems, a 2000 Chevy Canyon pickup, and an archive rider as surplus property. Ray, can you tell us a little about that?
So, these, these items here are no longer useful to the county for whatever reason the department is deemed them unusable anymore. But they might still have some value left in them. The library has no long, no longer has the use for the 2000 Chevy Canyon pickup due to their purchase of a little transit van a couple of years ago. And so, they'd like to dispose of that, and we're gonna do an online auction for that one. The Recorder's Office no longer has use for an archive rider, which to my understanding is like a super scanner of some kind. Anyway, they are going a different route, which is less expensive. And so, and then this, we're gonna plan on actioning this off. It's still got some good value left in it. The thirteen in-car camera systems is from the Sheriff's Office. And these are questionable at the time because they're really outdated, and we're not sure that we'll be able to sell them. We'll give it a good go, but if not, they'll just be disposed of.
We'll see what we can do. If we can get something out of, we'll take it.
Right.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Ray?
No, I'm just curious. Who's gonna buy those cameras, you know?
I wanted, I'm gonna buy one for Victor for Christmas.
Yeah, put it inside.
You can hang it on your shelf.
Very good.
Well, we'll see how it goes and, and we'll be disposed of one way or another. But if we can sell them and get some value out of them, that'll be great. But if not.
Well, if you have any bids coming from Moscow on the cameras, just kind of turn those down. You know, they're always trying to install cameras everywhere.
I'll keep that in mind.
Brock, those camera systems are ten years old or so, aren't they? Those L systems?
L3s, so they just.
L3s, yeah.
Sure.
Only they were state-of-the-art when we bought them, so. Okay.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we adopt Resolution R-2019-2462, resolution authorizing auctioning off of thirteen camera systems, 2007 Chevy Canyon pickup, and an archive rider as surplus property.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioners. All in support of Resolution R. 2019-2462, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number ten, consideration of Resolution R. 2019-2463, a resolution approving the execution, I always like resolutions approving executions, of an agreement between Washington County and City of Enterprise. So, it's a little different, and that's better. Which provides for additional law enforcement in the enterprise area. Brock, what's the agreement going to do?
So, this is gonna be in addition to the SRO agreement that we already have. That will stay in place. That position will still function as it does in the school and then in the summers in that area. Typically, or in the past, Enterprises had their own marshal that has done their local stuff for the city. They have decided to go away from that and use that money to contract with us for the additional law enforcement needs that they have besides what we're already providing. Some of that will come in the form of bailiffing for the Enterprise Justice Court. We have our targeted enforcement deputies that are not assigned to a specific area that are really designed to be extra for these type of things, so they'll take over those duties. And then either an area car or that car will go up and provide the patrolling that they request. So, they're giving us, at this point, it's about fourteen thousand four hundred per year and looking for about an average of six hours per week. That will slow down in the winter months and most likely extend in the summer months when they need those extra. So, it'll be a fluid situation, requests coming in from them, and we just try to take care of what they need and then bill them accordingly. So, that's really how it works. This has been in the plan for several months. We've met with Enterprise, the City Council, the mayor, and everybody's on board to move in this direction.
Perfect. We certainly value our relationship with Enterprise. I've been trying to work with them a lot more, and so I think this is a great idea.
Yeah, it'll be great.
Okay.
Lieutenant, a question. Do we already have sheriffs that are kind of on that side of the county anyway? And this is an extension of an area they're responsible for?
It is. So, this will be when, it's very similar to the contract we have in Tocqueville. We have deputies that cover that area anyway. This will be specific contract time. So, when the deputy that's assigned or in that area goes in, they will specifically contract during a certain amount of time during that shift for Enterprise alone, taking care of the things that the city needs, law enforcement needs. It kind of is, is that catch-all. So, in addition to any deputy being able to go up there and take a call, this will be the time where that deputy stays in that area for that specified amount of time to take care of those needs.
And we still participate with the city, school district.
Yes.
Or a school enforcement office as well.
Absolutely. And, and this all encompasses rodeos, parades, just all the extra additional things. They also have had the burden of taking on spillman contracts and, you know, dispatching. There's a lot that comes with trying to do your own thing. This is get, taking that money, allowing us to take care of all that, and, and so, we can just take care of law enforcement for them. They in turn are able to have that taken care of for that price.
Good deal for them.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Well, Mr. Chairman, with that, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution R-2019-2463, a resolution approving the execution of an agreement between Washington County, City of Enterprise, which provides for additional law enforcement in this area.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded in support of the resolution. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number eleven, consideration of Resolution Number R. 2019-2464, a resolution establishing cost recovery procedures related to the opioid epidemic and declaring the opioid epidemic and its effects on the county a public nuisance. Eric?
Commissioners, this is coming about as a result of the lawsuit the county has filed against certain opioid manufacturers and distributors that, that we allege and we believe are, are a small number of people that have been bad actors in the, in the cause of the opioid crisis that's confronting our country and our area. Generally, governments don't recover costs for the thing, the services we provide. In this instance, clearly, there have been some, some additional costs borne by our taxpayers in the form of government services that have had to be provided because of the over-prescribing of opioids. And so, what this does, and you'll see similar resolutions being passed by several counties around our state as our lawsuits kind of move forward, this goes through and kind of outlines the types of costs that we're looking at recovering in those laws, well, in our lawsuit and the other counties in their lawsuits as we move. as we move forward and try to work towards a solution to help us address this problem in our country.
Hey, thank you. Questions, comments?
No, I believe this resolution wholeheartedly puts us in the right place relative to the law and the other efforts being made by other counties. So I move that we adopt Resolution Number R-2019-2464, establishing cost recovery procedures related to the opioid epidemic and declaring the opioid epidemic and its effects on the county a public nuisance.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you for the motion and second. All in support, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 12, consideration of Resolution Number R-2019-2465, a resolution approving the execution of an agreement between Washington County and the City of St. George, transferring ownership of a public access right-of-way in St. George to the City of St. George. Sounds logical, Eric.
This is kind of a cleanup one. Every once in a while, we run across a roadway that wasn't dedicated to the county historically. It was deeded to the county. And then when cities expanded and incorporated that area, that roadway didn't automatically transfer as if it had been dedicated. And so this is one of those. This is the Webb Hill Road. It's used by people that hike and run that all the time. It's used for access to the different towers.
TV towers and cell phone towers.
It's almost in the middle of St. George now with how much St. George has expanded. County doesn't maintain it, titled in our names. Let us clean that up and transfer it.
Thank you.
Very good.
I move the same for Resolution 2019-2465 for this public access right-of-way basically on Webb Hill to be transferred to the City of St. George.
I'll second that motion.
All in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number 13, consideration of Resolution Number R-2019-2466, a resolution approving a sublease agreement between Washington County and the Huracan Valley Fire Special Service District regarding a new fire engine. I'm really glad to see the chief here. He supports us by coming to all of our meetings. But Commissioners, just quickly, the county stepped in and helped by allowing our municipal building authority to be used by the Special Service District to acquire a new fire engine that would be positioned in Springdale and serve up in the Zion Canyon area. That engine has been secured. The county has received, or basically, we have bonded for it. And this would allow us to lease the engine to the district. And the district would make yearly payments on it, which the county would then use to discharge the payment of the bonds. Chief, is there anything that I'm missing on this that needs to be stated? So this would formalize that lease, and I would recommend that we do it. So I'll go ahead and make that motion that we pass Resolution R-2019-2466, a resolution approving a sublease agreement between the county and Hurricane Valley Fire Special Service District on the fire engine.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. All in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Chairman, would you, for the benefit of the audience and for ourselves, kind of give us an update on the activity that Hurricane Fire responded to in Springdale?
Well, I would actually invite maybe the chief to tell us about. I heard that we sent a ladder truck up to Springdale on a hotel that had a plugged-up filter. And I'm just curious how that response went because...
Actually, the filter was in Laverickin. So we had a period of four structure fires over about a week and a half period of time, two in hotels, one in Laverickin that the systems were overheating, produced smoke on the third floor. Took us a while to figure out the source of that smoke. Did, able to encourage the hoteler to go in and do maintenance as necessary. And we also had one up in Springdale. It was actually the second time we've been to that hotel. We'll be working with them to try to have a little bit better features there where they had materials in one of their mechanical basement starting to catch fire. The crews that are on duty in Springdale responded, located that quickly, able to put it out. But yes, whenever we have a structure fire, we do respond various areas of the district with the required equipment.
Thank you. Well, I was right on that story as I told it to you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Well, I'm just glad that some of the forecasts that were taken during our public hearings didn't come about. Nobody was injured in that, were able to take care of it, so.
Very professionally. Item number 14, consideration of Resolution R-2019-2467, a resolution approving an agreement between Washington County and Watts Construction for remodeling of the exterior of the county's Boulevard Office Building. Nicole?
So I'll probably quote Chairman Cox when we say that the only time that we have any kind of roof problems is when it rains. And we constantly have had quite a bit of leaking at the Boulevard Building. And it's, Boulevard Building has stood the test of time, but now we need to pay a little bit of tender loving care to it. So what we wanted to do to save overall costs was, if we wanted to redo the roof, we decided to seek bids to redo the outside, the exterior. The hope is that we continue to use that building and hopefully one day just move it into just having the justice court take over that entire building. So we went out on March 8 seeking qualifications and bids. And we had five general contractors come to the pre-bid meeting. It is a little bit interesting, this remodel job. It's in an interesting time. It's very busy out there and remodels are not top priority. And they're dealing with micro piles, which I think some general contractors aren't as familiar with. So we had a bid opening on April 24. Watts came in with probably the only bid at this time, which was a bid that we felt like we were kind of looking at about that cost. So I feel satisfied and would like to recommend to you that we go ahead and approve Watts to be able to start the exterior remodel. They said that it'll be about 180 days from the time they start. We don't have a start date quite yet, but it'll be about a six-month period. And just keeping in mind with our architect that we put into place, they really tried to match the historic downtown St. Georgeville. So I think we'll be really pleased with the ending result.
Very good.
Thank you, Nicole. Thank you for all of your hard work on that. I know that you've put a lot of time into that.
I'm excited about this. This is gonna be a good thing. And it is gonna be fun for them as they move people around in and out of offices in order to get their crews in. But I'm, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution R-2019-2467, a resolution approving an agreement between Washington County and Watts Construction for remodeling the exterior of county's Boulevard Office Building.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Oomquist for the second. All in support of accepting Resolution R-2019-2467, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Our final item for today is Commissioners' Report and Other. And one of the things that I wanted to talk about, and then I'll let Eric maybe mention a little bit about. But some time ago, the county, working with the Public Lands Office of the Governor, has been working to resolve and find some type of a framework that would expedite the resolution of the RS-2477 roads. And Eric has been representing the county very, very well on that. And Eric, why don't you tell me what an application for a recordable disclaimer of interest for the Manganese Road means for Washington County and what this is attempting to do?
So similar to what the city just did, or what the county just did with St. George City, where you approved a quitclaim property over to the city. When federal lands are basically quitclaimed because there's a valid claim on it, they don't call it a quitclaim deed. They call it a recordable disclaimer of interest. Where they say, hey, someone else is making a claim of interest and we're gonna disclaim any interest we may have in this. So there isn't a cloud on that title. It's a process that's been around forever. Well, not forever, but it's a process that's been around and is used. It's used commonly for oil and gas stuff. It has not been used for RS-2477 issues. Those rights of ways have historically been taken to court. And you work through the court process. And we've been in that process for several years, where our lawsuit for our roads has been filed at least five years ago. And hasn't moved much since then. Washington County has filed on approximately 430 roads. I sat in as a law clerk, I sat in a trial for a right-of-way dispute. And it was a four-day trial for two roads. If we had to, with the type of evidence just put on, it just takes time to do a road trial, prove up a right-of-way. So if we had to do trial for 430 roads, we could be...
We'd spend a lot of time in court.
Yeah, we could be in court for, you know,
Years.
One to five years in a solid trial. And so the state, the county, and the Trump administration have been kind of exploring different ways that we can administratively still make sure that things are proved up, that the evidence is there, but that it doesn't have to go through a week of trial for you. And so this recordable disclaimer of interest is an avenue that we're pretty optimistic that we can get there with that. It goes through and lays out the evidence that's been gathered. It cites the several depositions where witnesses have talked about this road and how it was used prior to 1976. The historical evidence is there. It cites maps that the road appears on. The fact that the county's maintained it for decades and decades. And with your signature, we'll submit this. Kind of an administrative process where the county's been working on this for a long time. And then we'll submit it to BLM and see how it goes as they work it through their process. But hopefully, this could be the first RS-2477 road that comes back with the county ownership on with no cloud of title in the next couple of months.
Our lawsuit to resolve these issues has been a matter of public record for a long time. And so this is one of the best administrative signatures, I think, that we will give. And I surely hope that it will meet the requirements of the law and will be a model for expediting these, not only in Washington County, but throughout the entire state of Utah. And I appreciate the support of the state and the governor's office as well in working to find a resolution that may be this process way up. So thank you, Eric, for that explanation. And although it's administratively signed, I will sign it at the end of the meeting with the rest of our documents. If there is any other business, I would entertain it. And if not, I would...
Well, let's just note, Chairman, let's just note that a successful Ironman 70.3 was concluded. And that the organizers, the Ironman organization itself, is very pleased with so many things. And as you witnessed last night, primarily the volunteerism that makes it possible because so many are there. I can't remember, but they said their goal is actually two volunteers per athlete. And if you've ever attended the events where they're switching over from one, you know, from the swim to the bike or the bike to the run, they're swarmed by volunteers to help to make that transition. So I want to note that. And Eric and I attended a meeting in Zion and felt very good about stating the county's position in support of businesses relative to the use of the park. And without saying too much, we just made sure that everyone knew that we're in support of Washington County and enjoying what is a, what I consider the people's park and using it to its fullest extent while still preserving its ability to function. They, they beautiful.
Thank you. And in 2021, we're gonna get two Ironmans.
Two Ironmans, same year, yeah.
So that'll be pretty awesome. One will be the world championship in September and the regular race in May. And we're gonna have two of the next five will be full-distance 140.3 mile events, so.
It's fun to be there.
All right, thank you. I will declare the meeting adjourned. Just in time for our next meeting.